The November tenth meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Friling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
We have the council minutes from the October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Are there any edits?
We approve the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Walton, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
This takes us to our public hearings, of which we have, oh, I'm sorry, matters of special privilege, we have none today. So that takes us to our public hearings, of which we have two. The first is Planning Commission Recommendation sixteen dash zero one one, Silverhand Meterie Special Use Permit. Ms. Murphy?
Sir. Mayor Friling and members of City Council, Lynn Lavender is proposing to expand Silver Silverhand Meterie located at two twenty-four C Monticello Avenue into the adjacent unit at two twenty-four B, which requires a special use permit for the expansion. The proposed eleven hundred square foot expansion into Unit B will provide a total of just over twenty-one hundred square feet of interior space for the meterie. The applicant proposes to use the new space for retail sales, tastings, storage, and shipping. This small site currently contains a church office, an empty office space, and the meterie, which was approved in two thousand fifteen. No additional changes are proposed for the site. The existing church office is relocating from two twenty-four B into the adjacent space at two twenty-four A, allowing the meterie to expand into the adjacent unit. The applicant notes in the application that we have had a successful start to the business and have quickly found a necessity for more space to store product and conduct tastings. This business has grown over the last year and has proven to be an asset to Monticello Avenue and the Midtown Planning Area. Planning Commission held a public hearing on October the nineteenth. No one spoke at the public hearing, and they recommend to City Council by a vote of five oh that this special use permit be approved for the Silverhand Meterie to expand into the adjacent unit at two twenty-four B Monticello Avenue.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Questions from Ms. Murphy? With that, we will open the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to address counsel on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and come back to counsel for comment.
All I know is if I were to work in a church office, I would want it to be next to a meterie. This is a great use, it's a great business to have in the city, it's an adaptive use of that space that was underutilized. Mr. Lavender's got a lot of energy. It's contributing to our continual evolution as a beverage destination, so happy to support this.
Same with me, I think it's very exciting that he's asking for expansion since he's only been in business for about a year, and it's another place for visitors and residents to to attend, and it goes in line with the tasting trail that the Chamber has created, so.
Well, I'll echo the sentiments, and, you know, it is good to see a local, small businessman have some success, find success, and have the ability to expand and to offer his services to more people, so I think it's a no-brainer for me.
Yeah, the special use permit seems to be in harmony with what's designated, and I'm happy to support this SEP.
You know, the majority of small businesses fail in the short term, and that doesn't mean that small businesses shouldn't still keep trying, because here's an example of one that in a very small period of time has really garnered a following and had great success. It's a homegrown business from this community, tremendous entrepreneurial spirit on the part of Mr. Lavender and his team, and it complements a lot of what we've been trying to accomplish through our comprehensive plan, through our zoning, and through our goals and initiatives, and to me, this makes terrific sense. So, do I have a motion?
I approve the special use permit as recommended by Planning Commission number sixteen dash oh one one.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
The motion passes. This takes us to public hearing, the second public hearing, New Singular Wireless Doing Businesses AT&amp;T Wireless, Second Amendment to Lease Agreement.
I'll handle this one, Mr. Mayor. The city staff was approached several months ago by New Singular Wireless AT&amp;T, who currently leases space for cellphone equipment on the city water tank. Their lease expires September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and they're trying to ensure that they continue to have space on that location or some other location, and so entered into negotiation with city staff, and this is the result of that. It would be a lease extension for another five-year period with three additional lease periods available at the option of AT&amp;T for a total of twenty years, which would take us to the end of the timeframe that the city would be able to legally do this as an extension of the existing lease, or an amendment of the existing lease. The rent will increase in October of two thousand nineteen from what it currently is now, which is forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars a year, to forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars a year, with ten percent increases at the start of each additional lease term as requested by the lessee. And so with that, staff's recommendation to City Council is that the City Council authorized the city manager to execute the Second Amendment and the memorandum of agreement, which simply would be a document that could be recorded to provide a record in the city land records that this lease exists.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Sheldon? Forward? This might be for Mr. Collins. The revenue that's generated from these lease payments, does that go into general operating or into the utility fund? Mr. Sarah?
We get about a hundred and seventy thousand a year on four contracts right now in the utility fund.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing. Again, anybody who would like to address counsel on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and come back to counsel for comment. Straightforward.
I think it's, you know, it's good to have them there, because obviously they provide a service to our residents and visitors and people around the area. It's nice to have a little revenue. As you know it, we're going to find out how much it costs to replace roofs on water tanks, so it's good to have money coming in.
And in addition to providing that service, we know that cell towers are necessary. So are water tanks, because they're essential for the proper operation of our water system. So when you've already got a water tank intruding on the built environment, in the natural environment, and you can add the cell function to that, it's a win-win situation, because it doesn't then compromise some other area, and you probably get much better coverage there. And to Mr. Pons' point, the additional revenue to the city's utility fund is very valuable and appreciated. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the lease agreement and memorandum of agreement with the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC.
Second.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
This brings us to monthly financial statement. Anything you'd like to point out, Mr. Collins?
Just that revenues are adjusting a little bit back to a little closer to norms. The finance director and I continue to track them. They're tracking at, or, you know, a couple of them are a point or two above, and a couple of them are a point or two below. There's not a large number deviation. They are pretty close to projected budget, even if they're a percent or two underneath last year's performance, and we'll continue to monitor that closely. Expenses continue to track underneath budgeted amounts, so that'll offset a flat revenue. Any questions on finances, Phil, or I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Takes us to monthly department operating reports.
I'd like to focus just a little bit on public safety responses. The fire department continues to get a large number of call volume, which we saw last year and has continued into this year. That's important, given that the council did approve in the budget the additional EMS positions, and those are recruited and hired and coming on board now, so that's a welcome addition, given the higher call volume. The other thing that was requested during our earlier conversations individually was about police department response times and the two-point-eight-minute response versus the average of, so far to date, about two-point-four. Both of those numbers are still beneath the three-minute standard that the city sets. In conversing with the police chief, and my understanding, that is significantly lower than national averages as well for emergency response, first response, but at our three-minute level, so it's still below that. The average year-to-date at two-point-four is only within ten seconds of where we were at this point last year, so a couple calls, one way or the other, would account for that at this point. But we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that it remains below our standard. If there's any other questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Now, we have city manager reports, of which there are eight, quite a day here. The first is the adoption of goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the two thousand seventeen-eighteen biennium.
Staff has, it's been a privilege for staff to work with council and the community and the development of the GIOs. It'll be the two-year strategic plan that council establishes to guide staff in developing budgets and capital budgets, and where we work outside of our core levels of service for the next two years. I would remind council and the public that this is a living document, that we regularly report back to council on issues within it. Council checks with staff regularly on where we are in performing and implementing the policy set. The document provided before use in its final form, including the outcomes and measure section, but there's no changes beyond reported at Monday's work session. Be happy to answer any questions you have, and staff is available if you have any further questions.
No questions.
You have a comment?
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I don't like a but.
Mr. Zhang, questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think Mr. Collins said it best, this is a living document that we can use, but more importantly, it's a document that our residents and business operators can look at for, get an understanding of what we're doing in the city, and I think council's spent a fair amount of time on this, and I feel good about the outcome.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. I agree, and this is not Mr. Collins' document, this is not City Council's document, this is the community's Goals, Initiatives, and Outcomes document, because it guides how our community's going to move forward over the next two years. And as we mentioned on Monday, I think staff has done a terrific job pulling this all together, and the additional material in here that illustrates many of these points, I think is well worth residents looking at, and I would encourage people to do that. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council adopt, I don't have it written here, but adopt the biennial goals, initiatives, and outcomes as presented.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
This takes us to the legislative issues for the two thousand seventeen General Assembly. Proposed Resolution sixteen dash nineteen, Mr. Trivitt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. As you know, today, we're asking you to consider adoption of the two thousand seventeen legislative agenda. It has not been altered since it was presented to you, other than to fix a couple of typos that I found since presenting it to you on Monday, and also adding, under other issues of importance, the item that the council requested concerning workforce center, one-stop-shop for the greater Williamsburg area. And hopefully, you've all had a chance to take a look at that, and if it's adopted today, we look forward to a productive General Assembly session.
Questions, comments?
Like the new format? Moved we adopt proposed Resolution sixteen dash nineteen.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Trivitt, and all the staff that contributed to this. Very well done. This takes us to the Water Plant Tank Roof Replacement Award of Bid. Mr. Small.
Get this thing to work. I got it. Apparently, they're out of order. It's okay, I can work through it. Before you today is a resolution to award a contract for replacement of the water tank, one million gallon water tank, out at the water plant. This tank was built about thirty years ago, or back in nineteen eighty-two, when, as an expansion, just to provide additional capacity to the system. The roof has kind of experienced a little bit of deterioration, and it's time for it to be replaced, and so this contract that we have will remove the roof membrane that's out there, replace the post-tensioned concrete double T beams that form the main structure, clean out the interior of the tank, install new double T beams as a replacement, and then install a new waterproofing membrane, and then we'll disinfect the tank and put it back into service. This work will occur in December up to June. It does have funding, we received three bids on the project, and Concrete Protection and Restoration Inc. is the low bidder at a price of eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred dollars. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
If I may, I'd just point out to council that the budgeted amount, the capital project budget, is one million fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one, so the recommended bid of eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred's well within that project budget.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Small?
Mr. Small, will this in any way impede delivery of water to the residents for?
No, it's kind of, think about it in terms of an offline tank. It's actually that we've had the tank offline for about a year to a year and a half now, so that we can get this project designed and get it towards out for bid and under construction.
The bulk of this, I mean, it seems like a lot of money. I don't think anybody would dispute that. Is that so much the membrane, or is it the stuff inside?
It's really split. A lot of it has to do with access. These concrete double Ts that are in there, they're very heavy, they're also covering a fifty-foot span, so they're very long and bulky, and pulling out the existing one is going to require a pretty large crane to get back there, providing access to the road itself, and then we're actually providing additional coating systems that we were unable to provide when the original tank was built, because they just weren't allowed in contact with potable water, so, but we can do them now.
Are there any potential for, you know, hidden consequences that if we get in there, we might find some other stuff that we need to deal with?
I don't believe so. I think we tried to hit all the contingencies in our discussions with the proposed contractor, and we've actually worked with this contractor before. They just completed the work over for our parking terrace.
It's just a lifespan here, so we got thirty years?
I'm looking for more than thirty years out of this one. The prior tank, as I mentioned, the concrete was not coated, and so what tends to happen is the moisture from the tank environment, as well as some of the chemicals, the chlorine itself, can actually penetrate through the concrete and attack the rebar in the post-tensioning strands, and so what we're doing to protect that this time is to provide a coating system along the bottom surfaces of the beams, and that'll provide a barrier to prevent that corrosion from happening.
Could you just give a brief explanation of the role this tank plays in water delivery and purification process?
It's mainly to provide additional storage overall to the system. As you know, we have four tanks out in the system further out. We also have an additional half-million gallon tank adjacent to the water plant. So what it does is, that tank was originally designed to provide contact time for our chlorine treatment system before it gets released out into the distribution system. This tank provides additional time on that contact time, because we've also ramped up how much water we produce since the plant was originally built, and so that storage is basically a minimum requirement, or it's part of our requirements for storage within our water system.
So this is where the water goes after it leaves the plant and before it enters the distribution system?
Correct. It kind of goes into another, we have another tank, and then it'll go out to this tank, and then eventually come on out to the system, yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move that City Council award the contract and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Concrete Protection and Restoration Inc. for the water treatment plant tank roof replacement in the amount of eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
Second. Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Takes us to item four, Small Business Improvement Grant Program. Ms. DeWitt?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Here today to talk about the Small Business Improvement Grant. This is another piece of our toolkit for the Northeast Triangle efforts, where the Williamsburg Tourism was adopted by you last month. So, let's look at the map. That is the map of the tourism zone that was adopted, and I'll run through the tools. So the city's goals and initiatives have talked about enhancing this area and providing more vibrancy and to try to drive more customer traffic to this area, so these are the tools we're creating to get there. You've done these, and you've passed the zoning text amendments to allow the targeted businesses we're looking for to locate here by right. You, of course, passed the Tourism Zone Ordinance, which allows us to offer economic incentives to those targeted businesses, and also leverage the state gap financing and other tourism programs at the state for those type of businesses. Another piece of it is a streetscape design and infrastructure investment. She'll be talking about that later today in more detail, but we've been talking about it for some months, to create a sense of place here in this district, in this area. We also have a demolition program that's citywide, but can be used as another tool in this area to encourage redevelopment of underutilized properties. So today, I'm going to talk about yet another tool. So the Small Business Improvement Grant was approved by the Economic Development Authority, and this is a tool to encourage our existing businesses to invest in their businesses and improve the businesses, as we're doing the same as a city in the public infrastructure in trying to attract new businesses to come make private investment, where this grant will match any existing business improvements up to ten thousand dollars, fifty percent match. So if a business has a twenty thousand dollar project, the EDA will provide fifty percent of that at ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars is the maximum amount of the grant, so if it was a thirty thousand dollar project, the city would, or the EDA would still provide ten thousand dollars. So it's the lesser of fifty percent of the cost of the project or a ten thousand dollar grant. It's a short-term stimulus, trying to drive this activity initially, so it has a sunset clause of June of two thousand eighteen. It's for exterior and interior improvements. Again, this is, so the businesses will invest in their properties to drive customer traffic, ultimately driving business revenues, so we're including interior and exterior improvements. It'll be a first-come, first-served type of grant, which is how the EDA runs its other grant programs as well, and it will be managed by the economic development staff through the Economic Development Authority. So the request is to fund this at fifty thousand dollars, and so the city appropriated two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the EDA back in July for the demolition grant program, and so we're asking, through this amended memorandum of understanding between the city and the EDA, that the city be allowed to use fifty thousand dollars of that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to operate this grant program. And there's a amended memorandum in your packet, and there's also an example, the program guidelines for how the grant program works, as well as in your packet. The next steps would be, we're having a meeting with all the existing businesses and property owners in the Williamsburg Tourism Zone on November twenty-eighth. We're inviting the state down to join us, other department heads will join us, and we'll talk about all the resources and tools we have in place for this Williamsburg Tourism Zone. We also are working on professional targeted marketing of all these efforts to market to those targeted businesses and those existing businesses, tell them what's going on, and then, of course, like all programs, we'll monitor investment, vacancy rate, use mix, and available property, and report back at least annually to City Council and EDA on the progress. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll just, I'll point out that meeting Monday, this was supported, everyone's excited, so I didn't.
Well, as Michelle said, it's yet another tool, and I think the more tools in the box, the better, as far as spurring development and bringing businesses and creating much more of a vibe on that street, so I think it's good.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but my only comment would be that, you know, this is really exciting, and as I've said before, you know, Capital Landing Road has been the target of a lot of conversations for a lot of years, and I'm really proud to be a part of putting some actionable things in place where businesses can take advantage to help them, you know, be better at what they do.
Yeah, no questions, but I just want to commend again, just what a cool way to, as we talk about these comprehensive redevelopment approaches, especially in the Northeast Triangle area, how you, we were talking about, you know, providing incentives to try to lure some new businesses, but also existing businesses in the area, and this, again, like Ms. Ramsey said, adds more options in the toolbox, especially for existing businesses, now to give them an opportunity to really be a part and take some ownership with this whole redevelopment effort, so well done.
So you mentioned that there's a sunset clause, June twenty eighteen, and that's to create some urgency on the part of the existing businesses, so that they just don't think, well, this is always out there, I can wait?
Exactly.
That's June of twenty eighteen or until the fifty thousand dollars is exhausted?
Exactly.
So at ten thousand dollar maximum, there could be five businesses, but there could be more. If a business only invested ten, and there was a fifty percent match, it would get five, correct?
Exactly.
Do you happen to know approximately how many businesses are in the zone?
Oh, I did know that, and it has slipped my mind. We will, we'll get back to you, I don't want to misspeak.
And is there any, the money paid after the fact, when the business can then show the work that was done and provide the receipts, as opposed to, here's what I'd like to do, can I get the money?
Yes, exactly. All our grant programs work that way, where the business actually pays for the cost of the improvement or the work, and then the EDA reimburses them.
So the work would need to be done by June twenty eighteen, not just the promise?
Well, we have a, I think the work has to be done within six months of approval, so if we still had money in June of eighteen and someone, June of twenty eighteen and someone applied, then they'd have that six-month window to complete it.
And just to echo what my colleagues have said, this is, it's a small piece, it's a nice piece, but when you put it together with all the other pieces, it starts to create a really nice package of opportunities for business to take advantage of. Do I have a motion?
I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute an amended memorandum of understanding between the EDA and the city to enable the EDA to use fifty thousand dollars of its demolition program funds to administer the new Small Business Improvement Grant Program.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
This brings us to item five, fiscal year
This brings us to item five, Fiscal Year 18 Revenue Sharing, Proposed Resolution 16-17. Welcome back, Mr. Small.
Thank you, sir.
Did they give you a presentation this time?
Apparently, there are some missing presentations. You have them on your iPad. We will make sure that they are out and distributed with the rest of the packet at a later time.
Thank you, Mr. Barham.
But I'll just be flexible and work through this. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the leaves are falling, and once again, I'm coming before you to present our annual request for revenue sharing funds through VDOT. The city's been pretty active in this program. Past projects funded include the Five Sidewalks Project that we completed in 2010, the Prince George Armistead Avenue Project, and the Eight Sidewalks Project completed in 2014, the York Street Project in 2015, and the Ironbound Long Hill Intersection, which is currently under design. And finally, our 2015 and 2016 paving schedules were received supplemental funding. The revenue sharing program allows the city to gain more value out of our local dollars by leveraging them 50/50 with VDOT funds with only a little state oversight required. And that makes this a very advantageous funding source for local governments. For Fiscal Year 17, the Commonwealth Transportation Board approved a state match of just under $172 million for 223 projects statewide. That is down from $181 million a year prior, but, and none of the FY17 projects were maintenance projects, which was the only project that the city had applied for last year. For FY18, we are requesting funds for three projects. Two of these are for construction, and the third will be for additional maintenance funding. The first construction project is the Capital Landing Road Bypass Road Intersection. The purpose of this project is to improve safety and provide faster movements from Bypass Road onto northbound Capital Landing Road. The project will remove the sweeping right turn lane that turns from Bypass onto southbound Capital Landing and provide for dedicated right turn and left turn lanes at the T intersection, as well as a relocated entrance for the businesses across the street. A new traffic signal will be installed to coordinate the movements and provide pedestrian and bicycle accommodation. Revenue sharing funds will also accelerate this project so that we can begin the design in Fiscal Year 18 over the traditional highway funding practices, which I'll discuss in a few minutes. The second construction project, and that project is, has an estimated cost of $1,908,500, and therefore, the city's estimated local match will be $954,250. The second construction project is related to the new Culinary Arts District along Capital Landing Road. This project provides for a complete streetscape redesign, starting at the Colonial Parkway in the south all the way up to Merrimack Trail. The new project will replace the curb and gutter and the entrances, remove the existing sidewalks, and replace them with very wide pedestrian and business-friendly sidewalks with landscaping, furnishings, and bus shelters. And it'll install new street lighting and place all overhead wiring underground, with the exception of the transmission mains that cross the road. And it'll also provide for resurfacing the street. After resurfacing, the new street will be restriped to only provide two travel lanes and additional room for bicycle lanes and other features that are yet to be determined in that design. The general intent is to provide facelifts similar to the York Street Project that we just completed, but on a little bit different scale, especially with the underground wiring. That project has an estimated cost of $5,774,300, with the local match being $3,537,150. Our third project is to provide for additional maintenance funds for paving. In 2012, the Commonwealth Transportation Board changed the rules to allow for maintenance projects, including asphalt resurfacing, to apply for revenue sharing funds, whereas previously, the program only allowed for funded construction projects. For many years, the city has allocated a fixed dollar amount for our annual pavement resurfacing program, but the costs for asphalt have increased dramatically over the years. And the additional revenue from the revenue sharing project would allow us to double the amount of work that we could perform, and it keeps us on track with our scheduled street maintenance efforts. Should the funds be granted, we intend to resurface approximately 6.89 miles of roadway, of which the city maintains approximately 51.2 miles, and so the fiscal 18, Fiscal Year 18 request would provide for maintenance of around 13.5% of the streets in the city. Before you today is a resolution supporting these applications, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have on any of the three projects.
Mr. Foster?
This is exciting. The streetscape improvements on Capital Landing Road very well be the game changer. Excited about the opportunity to apply. What's our, what's our track record like on?
On getting revenue sharing?
Yeah.
It's actually been quite good for the construction projects. Nearly every one that we've applied for, we've received funding for. Not so much on the maintenance. Last year was the first year that we did not receive funding for any of the revenue sharing projects that we'd applied for in at least the last five to six years.
Okay. Exciting stuff. It's amazing how fast, after talking about Capital Landing Road, as long as I've been paying attention, doing a lot.
Yeah, I would just echo what Scott said and come in, well, for going after the money that's available or hopefully available, and it makes perfect sense to try and get that from VDOT. Good luck.
Thank you, Aaron. Obviously, we've done some design work on the street. You mentioned the elimination of a driveline on going in each direction. Have we done any analysis on how that might impact traffic on the street?
As far as?
Just flow. You know, if we've only got one lane heading east or whatever direction it is, and cars stop to turn into businesses, does that impede the flow of traffic significantly?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it would, but we haven't done anything significantly to look at studies based on that.
Traffic counts are low on the street now, so the street's overdesigned for the current traffic. Anything that we put in place would have to pass muster with VDOT and our standards to be able to handle the expected traffic flow at build-out. But there is an idea of creating a pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment that matches that Culinary Arts District land use decision that council's made beside it.
Well, and I see your point there. But if Capital Landing, so I guess my question is, if Capital Landing Road becomes as successful as we aspire it to be, putting all this work into it, traffic hopefully will increase. And so will the, will the road infrastructure be placed to handle that increase?
One of the things we looked, did look at in terms of especially the traffic signal itself, as you'll see, we actually did have to do a little more analysis on the intersection improvements for our later funding application that I'll mention in a minute. But we actually did have to look at growth rates on the traffic and make sure that that was projected out to the design limit, which is, I believe, a 22-year in the future beyond the construction date. So we're looking at traffic volumes 30 years from now, based on a lot of buildup in that area. But it does appear that it's still in the realm of being able to support on a two-lane road.
No other questions?
The good news is that, at least looking at the image that we have, and obviously this isn't a final drawing, but each side that's heading into the intersection has at least one turn lane, so that should help alleviate some of that.
No further comment, I'll just to thank you and city staff for putting this all together, and just happy to support this resolution, so hopefully we get those funds.
Mr. Small, what I really like about this request is that you're asking the state for money and just looking for our approval to do it as opposed to, but you're indirectly asking us for money at the same time.
Yes, it does. It does require that. If you read the resolution, there is a paragraph in there, the state requires us to commit to providing those funds. Now, that commitment could be part of your budget request. But say you decide not to commit to those funds. If we were awarded the project by the CTV come June or July, and if you don't have the money, we can just turn down the request.
How do you, how do you know how much to ask for? How do you, not for each project, but I mean, how do you anticipate what the threshold of tolerance from the state would be on the funding that they would dedicate to this locality?
Well, the easiest thing to look at is, is the maximum that the state will give you is $10 million per locality per year. So that's really the cap. But other than that, there really isn't a cap. You know, as to far as do smaller projects get more likely funded than bigger projects? It's hard to say.
And the approval by the state is by project and not by dollar amount? So they evaluate each of these three projects independently?
That's my understanding is, is yes, they're rated independently, and then actually the maintenance, each project is given a certain priority based on state law. And I believe the maintenance projects are actually given what's called a category three funding priority. And so whereas the construction projects, because they're new projects and have no current funding, they would fall into that category two priority. If your project already had some funds on it, but it wasn't started because we just didn't have the money yet, then it would fall into that higher category one, you know, if it was a prior revenue sharing project.
And you mentioned the maintenance money's a little bit harder to come by?
Has been just this past year. And what it is, is the state has found other sources. If you recall from last, I believe it was in July, at the July council meeting, you approved accepted, accepting funds from the State of Good Repair Program for funding primary road paving. That actually worked out really well for us because we're able to pave a million dollars this coming spring. So we essentially got double the funds of what we would normally pave.
So most of what we're looking at with this maintenance plan is, these are not primary roads?
I'm focusing on, only one is on there, and that is Lafayette Street?
Lafayette Street, okay.
And I believe, and that is, actually, no, that's in 17.
Second street is on here.
None of the roads that are listed on here are part of the state route system. There's a small section of Francis Street that might be Route 5, but most of these are going to end up being your local roads.
So what, then what is our plan if we don't get any revenue sharing funds? We look for sources elsewhere?
I will be looking for other sources. For the primaries, I'll be looking for that State of Good Repair funding. That program is sometime in the January, February timeframe for those applications. However, for the local roads, there really isn't another funding source other than our annual maintenance payments that we get from VDOT.
So...
I'm sorry, if I may. If council appropriated a million dollars in the capital improvement budget with the understanding that $500,000 of that would be a VDOT grant, so the local match is still there. So we, there are a couple options. If we don't have grant funding, we can hold off until we receive grant funding, put it off another year. We can use the half million and just pare down the list and get something accomplished, or seek other funding, as staff said. Those are your three options there. Or you could add more funding.
So where I'm going with this is, we've got a number of street projects listed here, and just because a street project is listed here in no way is a guarantee that that project is going to happen next year.
That is correct.
I just want people to get their hopes up. Other questions, comments?
Well, just, so, just a comment, you know, this type of investment in our infrastructure goes a long way to our economic development. I think it's important that we, we try to do these things and try to find the money, and as you said, it is, if the state's giving it away, we should ask for it, not that they give it away frivolously, but clearly, this is a targeted area, this is a main entrance corridor, it's, you know, it's our coming off Interstate 64, it's kind of, that could be the, you know, the flow of traffic that brings people to town and then, and out of town. So this type of investment, I think, is a good positive thing for the city's long-term viability in terms of economics, so.
Move council approve Resolution 16-17 to authorize the city manager to proceed with the plan. FY18 VDOT revenue sharing funds and to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out the revenue sharing program. Second.
Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Fryling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
I guess you, Mr. Small, you're going to be staying with us for the next one, aren't you?
I'm here for the next one.
This is Smart Scale 2016 Applications, Proposed Resolution 16-16.
Once again, my presentation is missing. However...
A chief sloggy on it, he will take care of this.
Smart Scale is the, the new traditional funding mechanism for VDOT to allocate federal and state funds to localities as well as their own districts and other government entities. What it is, is it's essentially funding the six-year improvement plan out for that final year. So these funds are actually, if you're applying this year, those funds are available in 2022 is when those become available. Project, again, is funded based, the new way of doing it is very objective. It's looking at items such as safety, overall congestion mitigation, as well as economic development is a big factor in these projects. So those are the benefits, but they look at the cost, you know, and are you providing the best bang for the buck based on traffic volumes that you see out there? And so, as well as, you know, how much is put forth. These projects do not require a match for that funding, unlike the revenue sharing, which is a 50% local dollars. However, providing local dollars to these projects does help you improve your cost-benefit ratio, because they're only looking at how much the state applies. Last year, under what was known as, at the time, as HB2, there were 430, they funded about a billion dollars in projects statewide. This year, there were 436 applications submitted by 148 agencies for a total match there of $925 billion. This year, there's expected to be $1 billion available for funding projects. And the city, we are applying for six individual projects. The first project, again, is the Capital Landing Road Bypass Road Intersection Project. This is essentially the same project that we've applied for revenue sharing funds, but the funds that we've applied for is the full cost of those funds. If awarded, council would then have the option, if awarded both funding mechanisms, whether you want to do it next year and pay for half the cost with local dollars, or defer it for probably five years, five to six years. The estimated cost is $2,144,760, and the reason that cost is a little higher than the revenue sharing application is simply due to inflation at the time of construction. The next project that we're applying for is Ironbound Road Phase 2. As you remember, the first phase of the overall Ironbound Road corridor, which began, this whole project was initiated back in about 2008. But this project, the Phase 2 project, continues the work that we're doing right now with the Ironbound Road Long Hill Road. the work that we're doing right now with the Ironbound Road Long Hill Road intersection realignment. This phase would widen up at Richmond Road and provide dual left turn lanes at that signal, as well as a dedicated right turn lane onto Richmond Road. So we'd add an extra lane between Long Hill and Richmond Road. We'd also widen the road between Middle Street and Trayburn Drive and extend the multi-use trail that's to be built with James Blair down to the Trayburn Line signal. And then we would also tie in the signals and improve the signals at Trayburn Drive with the Long Hill and the Iron, Richmond Road signals. We would also provide underground wiring. This was designated as an underground wiring corridor back in 2008, and so the underground wiring would continue from Middle Street down to Trayburn Drive. Estimated cost for Ironbound Road Phase Two is $1,922,700. Our third project for Smart Scale is the Ironbound Road Phase Three. This continues that corridor widening all the way down from Trayburn Drive down to the city line at DePew and Ironbound Road at Eastern State Hospital's entrance. It would also be a thirty-six wide, thirty-six feet wide of pavement, which would provide two travel lanes in each, one in each direction, and a two-way center turn lane to provide for those turning motions. It would also extend the multi-use trail all the way down and tie it in to the James City County Trail at Plumerie Park. And then we would also replace the four-foot wide sidewalk on the south side with a five-foot wide sidewalk and provide accessibility for the bus shelter that's down near the Eastern State Hospital entrance. We would also continue the underground wiring along that corridor, all the way to the city line. So that would be done for an estimated cost of $3,312,400. Our last three projects are concerning our traffic signal system, and these are just to provide overall upgrades to all of our, or many of our existing signals. The first of these three projects is Richmond Road traffic signal upgrades. This will upgrade nine signals that run between the Governor Berkeley signal with Richmond Road all the way down to the Scotland Street signal, and also includes the shopping center signal on Monticello Avenue. What we provide in this is upgrading the signal controller hardware as well as the cabinets, so the inner guts of the signal system, as well as providing flashing yellow arrow left turn signals, like you've probably seen in the county. They're considered much safer than our current green yield on the green ball. We would provide video detection, our vehicle detection with video equipment. We would install or enhance the emergency vehicle preemption, the EVP system for fire and police. We would install and update pedestrian push buttons and provide countdown pedestrian signals as well. And then a few of the signals, we would actually replace the posts and the mast arms. Currently, like the Governor Berkeley signal is actually on cables. That would replace that with solid mast arms. And then we would optimize and provide synchronization for all of the signals along Richmond Road so that they would be talking to each other and adjust as necessary. Total cost for the signal system upgrade on Richmond Road would be $3,146,072. Second of the signal projects is the three signals on Lafayette Street, right here in the municipal area. It would, again, upgrade the cabinets, provide yellow signals, pedestrian indication. We would actually provide pedestrian signals and crosswalks at the Armistead Avenue, where they don't currently exist. Upgrading the EVP system and replacing post and mast arms where necessary, such as like at Henry Street and at Armistead Avenue. And those signals also would be optimized for timing and synchronization. That, these three signals would be upgraded at a cost of $1,395,230. And then the final two signals to be upgraded are the two signals on Page Street at Second Street and on down at the Tri-Corner intersection with York, Page, and Lafayette. Again, this would provide flashing yellow arrows at Second Street, vehicle detect, video detection equipment, as well as EVP upgrades at Second Street. We would also install a pedestrian crosswalk with countdown at both signals and be able to cross Second Street, as well as providing one across York Street. And then we would replaced, basically replace the entire signal at Page, Second Street, and optimize those signal timings. Again, the cost there is $700,528. And those are the six projects for Smart Scale, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell me what vehicle detection and with video detection equipment means?
If you drive down currently Monticello Avenue out in the county, just beyond Ironbound Road, you'll see a tall mast with a video camera on it. And what that's doing is, is it's looking and comparing the image that it sees and determines if pixels are moving in the lane area. So you can actually adjust to be able to pick up video detection in certain lanes. So one camera can actually pick up multiple lanes, and it's just determining if a vehicle's there.
Okay.
How it improves over what we have currently, right now, we have, like, for instance, at the Governor Berkeley signal, they just did some upgrades at the Wendy's drive-through. And when they redid their pavement, they ripped out the traffic loop. So now they've got to replace that traffic loop with a different traffic loop. If we had video signals, wouldn't have affected the signal at all. And there's other enhancements that you get out of it. You can actually do traffic counts and all kinds of other little things.
Talk a little bit about accounting for future use of the lot that I would say was behind Aldi. So lots of Ironbound Road and the Aldi Shopping Center.
I believe the traffic counts that we look at for Ironbound Road over in, in general, that traffic study was done a few years ago, and every time we go through a separate phase, we have to update the study to add the traffic. I don't know if we've looked at additional improvement there, but there is a lot of traffic that's proposed for future coming out of High Street.
Okay, gotcha.
No questions? Just, I think for a lot of people, the main enhancement will be synchronization of the lights.
Yes.
Everyone always talks about that. Boy, traffic signals are expensive.
They, they can be very expensive.
Is it the technological part? Is it the electronics? Is it the posts and mast arms?
It's a little of everything. It is a little of everything. I mean, if you look at some of our signals right now, a lot of standards have changed. The mast arms, as the roads get bigger, you only have one mast arm cantilevered out. Well, that requires a huge post, just because of the weight sticking way out there. There's other things that we have to do. When we have to put another traffic head up, like, for instance, at Armistead Avenue, we would have to add another signal there for the traffic regulation. So we'd need another three mastized traffic head. Well, that adds extra weight to the currently up to the limit mast arm. So we end up having to replace the mast arm, which means we've got to replace the post and the foundation. So we've got to bring it up to standard at that point. So it is, it's a lot of everything.
So as with the revenue sharing, these projects are all evaluated individually?
Yes, it's all, very much, it is, this is a very highly complex scoring system that they go through. For each one of these projects, we're given a designated area and how it improves the overall statewide transportation plan, the VTранs twenty forty plan, the long-range plan. And we also look at our, how, what economic development benefit do we have within a half a mile or a mile of these projects? And so we're looking at all kinds of things going on, just to try to get the added points to make these projects very beneficial.
So we have a rubric that we can use to do our own preliminary scoring that gives us an idea of how a project might come up?
I wish it was that easy. My understanding is, is the spreadsheet that they go through, there's a lot of parts of that scoring system that we just don't have the ability or have the numbers necessarily to evaluate.
So where does the state get the numbers? How, how does the state get the numbers?
Essentially, a lot of the VDOT central staff, they're going through a lot of analysis between the time of application for these projects and the time they actually have to make those recommendations. So they go to about four to six months. That, they're spending a lot of time crunching numbers.
We have, we have six projects, and we're just a tiny community. I mean, it's got to be an enormous task.
It is.
And this totals around 12 and a half million dollars?
Yes.
The good news is, for any of these that, for which we are awarded the funds, it's full funding.
Correct.
The bad news is, if it was anything we wanted to do now, and we wanted to accept that, we'd have to wait five to six years to.
Potentially. These are the requests what we're making. We're requesting 12 million. There is a possibility they may say, well, you only get half your money now. And then maybe you'll get the rest of it the following year.
When you apply, and it's another six-year.
And another funding mechanism, yes.
Wow, it's a lot to put together. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Small?
Council approve Resolution sixteen dash sixteen to authorize the city manager to proceed with applying for Smart Scale twenty sixteen funds and to execute all necessary documents relative to carrying out approved projects.
Second.
Ms. Walton.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Are you sticking with us, Mr. Small?
Still here, sir.
So this brings us to the Compton Drive Multi-Use Pathway, proposed Resolution sixteen dash eighteen.
This is actually not a city project. Before you today is a resolution of support for a project that the College of William &amp; Mary is seeking. They're seeking the same, similar funds, the Transportation Alternatives. It's now called the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, which is the funding mechanism we used to apply for the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Trail, which is in the same area. Runs from Ironbound Road down to the School of Education at Trayburn Drive. What they're proposing is an extension of their existing wide concrete sidewalk from their pathway through the woods to the School of Ed, but to extend that along Compton Drive on that southwest shoulder area and connect it to our Monticello Trail. What they're seeking here is essentially a resolution of support from city council for their project, to support their project application, similar to the way that they provided a similar letters of support for our Monticello Trail.
Question, any questions?
It's easy for me to support this. There's two projects to put together. It would be a vast improvement for that section of the city.
And I think it's just a big safety issue, too, for any of the kids that walk along that street. It's just a little tiny path that gets muddy and it's dark, so fully in support of it.
Right. As you can see in the picture, that's part of the power, your presentations that were in the agenda, you see one of the college students jogging right along the edge of the white line. While I was out there with the, with the representatives from the college, we saw buses coming down through there, and they're sweeping, they're going around to get around people coming on that left shoulder. They're going all the way across the double yellow line, right in the middle. It, it's not a safe situation. Plus, it's very dark through there, and their plan is to also add lighting along that to make it much safer.
I would agree. For the human factor, it's, it's important to get something like this done, so it makes sense that we would support it.
Thanks for the presentation. Happy to offer my support.
The thing that makes this, I think, even more important now is the project that will go forward along Monticello Avenue. Because, I mean, right now, there's sidewalks that goes basically from the college recreation facility along Compton and then ends at that point where one would cross Compton in order to go to the School of Education.
Correct. That's correct.
And this will be extending that side of Compton. So once the Monticello Avenue Multi-Use Path is put in, you then have a clear gap where you're directing pedestrian traffic down to one point, the safe zone ends, and in order to get to the next safe zone, you risk life and limb.
Correct. You're either going to go all the way out of your way over to the, following the School of Education path, or you might continue along the dark road, or even worse, go through the woods. And that's not something we want to promote.
Yeah, and the, and the speed limit on Compton is 25, but the frequency of vehicles that actually adhere to that speed limit, it's, it's not very good. And I know that's college property. It's not our place to enforce it, but it's, when it's dark, it's, it's dicey. Thank you for this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that council approve Resolution sixteen dash eighteen in support of the College of William &amp; Mary's application to the VDOT Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program to construct the Compton Drive Multi-Use Pathway.
Second.
Ms. Walton.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
This takes us to the Capital Landing Road Underground Wiring Corridor, proposed ordinance sixteen dash twenty.
Okay, this is the last item that I'll be presenting for your consideration. This is an proposed ordinance related to the two projects on Capital Landing Road. The ordinance before you will designate Capital Landing Road from Jefferson Street north to Merrimack Trail as an underground wiring corridor. I'll explain the limits in a second. In accordance with the VDOT policy, in accord, in order to include underground wiring as a part of your road project, council must establish by ordinance the specific area being considered in the corridor. By doing that, the underground wiring is not only mandated, but it is included as part of the road project cost. The good news is that the highway project will pay for 50% of the cost of this underground wiring, with the city paying the other 50%. We're estimating the cost of the underground wiring for the Capital Landing Corridor to be about 2.6 million, and that was included in those other costs that I'd provided earlier. Therefore, the highway project cost would be about 1.3 million, and the city covering the other 1.3. If the Capital Landing Corridor project is awarded the revenue sharing funds, the 1.3 million project cost is further split 50/50 per the revenue sharing guidelines. And so the city's actual out-of-pocket cost for this underground wiring is 1.95 million, or 75% of the total underground wiring cost. So that, that's the gist of it. The reason for the limits from Jefferson Street, which are, is about, that's about the location of the last pole that we would underground wiring from there across the parkway, and then continue up Capital Landing Road, ending at a pole right in front of the Spring Arbor Retirement Community.
Makes sense to do it now while we've got all these other.
Right.
Wish lists out there.
As again, if I may add, the, we did do this as part of the Ironbound Road project. That was designated back in 2008 as an underground wiring corridor, and so we're able to use project funds to help pay for that underground wiring as well.
So just to emphasize, this is not an additional expenditure of money. This is helping us to apply for the money that we've already authorized the application for.
That's correct.
Do you have a motion?
I move that council approve ordinance sixteen dash twenty establishing Capital Landing Road as an underground wiring corridor.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Fryling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Would you like to stay and do the city attorney report? Ms. Shelton?
Other than to express great happiness today that I'm not the city engineer, I have nothing else.
We, we share that happiness. Unfinished business. We have PCR sixteen dash zero zero nine, food truck regulations, proposed ordinance sixteen dash fifteen, and proposed ordinance sixteen dash fifteen A. This is an item that council. This is an item that council looked at last month and decided to put it off for further consideration, allowed the entire council to be here, and also to get some additional input from the community. Ms. Murphy?
Yes, sir. Mayor Filing and members of city council, at your October city council meeting, you asked staff to investigate and report on food truck policies in James City and York County, and to check with the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association to determine if they have a position on allowing food trucks in the newly-created B4 Culinary Arts and Hospitality District. I checked with James City, and the James City Board of Supervisors will vote at their November meeting to allow food trucks in the M1 Limited Industrial District, the M2, the General Industrial District, the PUDC, which is the Plan Unit Development Commercial District, and the PL, which is the Public Lands District. Also, James City County Planning Commission will look at allowing food trucks in their B1 General Business District in November. If the commission makes a decision in November, that recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors in December for their consideration. York County currently allows food trucks in their industrial and business districts. I contacted Debbie Schaefer with the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association, and she pooled the Restaurant Association membership, and no members were in opposition to allowing food trucks in the newly-created B4 Culinary Arts and Hospitality District. So that's my update based on last month's questions for staff.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Comments, questions?
Didn't James City County vote last, was it last night, night before last?
I think that was the, the planning commission was voting last night, or it could be the supervisors. I haven't got an update on that yet.
Mr. Foster?
So I started working with the ordinance, the planning commission version, and had a number of questions that Mr. Collins and I discussed this morning. Gave good advice in that, that I agree with, that I'm comfortable moving forward with this version today with the intention of continuing to look at and revise this as we go on, learn from the needs of potential food truck users. I'll point out several things that, maybe ask Ms. Murphy, Mr. Collins shed some light on, but, so under A4...
And this is 16-15A?
A, the planning commission version. Applicants shall provide a valid driver's license for each person who will drive the food truck. Coupled that with number five, applicants will provide current registration for the food truck, proof of current motor vehicle inspection, and proof of valid motor vehicle insurance for the food truck. What are we trying to achieve there?
Number one, that the food truck will move. We want to make sure that they don't replace bricks and mortar investment in the city. You want them to be able to move, so the operators need to be legally licensed so they can drive it off-site, which is state law for operating a motor vehicle. Might be redundant for state law, understand that. Number five, with the registration, proof of current, you want it operable. You don't want a junk vehicle to become a food truck. And so sometimes when you draft regulation, you not only are trying to make sure the innovative good thing happens, but you're trying to protect against some less desirable outcomes to happen as well. So just making sure that it remains a legally licensed and registered vehicle means that it can be moved.
Okay, so understanding that as a valid concern, it would seem that C3 speaks to Unless otherwise approved, food trucks shall be removed from the site when the on-premises establishment closes for the day. It would have to be able to move, it would have to have someone to drive it in order to comply with that requirement. But whether we do it today or in the future, I think we can parse this down some. My goal in this is, I want it to be used, I want whoever applies to have food trucks in the city to feel that...
Not too restrictive.
Not too restrictive, we're easy to work with, and that this is something we are actually trying to facilitate. Those two things caught my attention. Ms. Shelton and I talked a little bit about C2, food trucks shall operate only on developed and occupied property and only during the hours when the business establishment on the premises is open for business. She had, you had some thoughts on that?
Well, I have a suggestion for some additional clarification for C3, which is, the zoning administrator may approve trucks remaining on-site for multiple-day events or late closings on a case-by-case basis, added to the beginning of the sentence, so that it would go on to read, "Food trucks shall be, unless otherwise approved, food trucks shall be removed from any site when the on-premises establishment closes for the day," to create some flexibility. So again, you don't want the food trucks to become a permanent fixture, and they need to generally work within the business hours of the underlying business on the property, but recognizing that there are special events and things that occur that might, the food truck may need to stay on-site for a few days because there's a festival or something like that, that allows us to deal with it on a case-by-case basis. And so I think that clarifying language would be helpful if that's what council's looking for.
Well, I agree with that. While we don't have to come up with it today, I think we could do is, for some additional clarification on C2 as well, operate only on a developed and occupied property and during the hours when the business establishment premises is open for business. Say that it locates in a motel parking lot, that's a 24-hour business. That would seem to be a concern, given this drafting. It's also, I mean, they're commercially zoned properties over there that have what is more or less a residence. Residents, they have an office on Capital Landing Road, that doesn't really have hours. I think we could, we would be well-served to tease out what it means to be developed and occupied.
We'll look at that.
And number, I guess this is C11, I understand that the first restrictions with regard to the A-frame signs and the wanting to, we don't want someone having a mega sign that, the last sentence, signage that is permanently affixed to the food truck shall be permitted, our flags, banners, and other decorative appurtenances, whether attached or detached, shall not be allowed. So, talked to Mr. Collins about this, the idea is, you don't want a food truck becoming an extra billboard for a business on-site, but to the extent that the food truck's already covered with advertisements, I don't particularly see the harm in a flag and a flag holder that says "Open" or vinyl banner that advertises some special event associated with the reason the food truck's there to begin with. Just, I think if the concern is that it becomes a, the additional signage becomes proxy sign for the underlying business, that's already there with the food truck, unless I'm missing something. So I think we could look at that in the future. Again, I just want to be flexible so people who are going to make this investment, go to the effort of creating a food truck, feel free to be creative in this district, because I think that's our ultimate goal.
And I would agree with you. You know, we want, you know, this to be the culinary trail, we want this to be, you know, an exciting opportunity for people to go over there and shop-dine, have a good time. And so, you know, I don't want to make it too heavy-handed so that it kind of diminishes that opportunity. You know, what I do like about, number's lost now, but, oh, here we go, in C3, unless otherwise approved, maybe we can add that in 11 as well, so that if somebody does have a banner, there's an opportunity for the zoning administrator to look at it and make an opinion, just as an observation. But, you know, and I think it kind of answers, going back to C3, kind of speaks to the question I asked last month about, you know, making the food truck operator leave every time, you know, when they may be back tomorrow. You don't want a food truck just to stay there and become a quasi-brick-and-mortar restaurant, and that kind of takes away from the, you know, being a food truck and the mobility of it. So I like that we've got that in there.
I'm not a food truck operator, but I, the, my understanding is that with most food trucks, maybe not all of them, they don't have the capacity to stock up for multi-day use. They have to return to a central point where there's refrigeration, prep opportunities, and then reload the truck and bring it back. So I'm not, I don't think that's onerous, but we, having the flexibility in there in case there is a truck that has that capacity, that makes sense. On the banner question, again, I don't have tremendous experience with food trucks, but it seems like whenever there's an event, the banner is associated with the business or with the event site itself. And I can't recall ever seeing a banner on a food truck, because generally that then disrupts the branding of the truck, because they have signage on the vehicle that they like for people to see that draws their businesses in. So I don't think that's, it's fine if you want to put in the part about, unless otherwise approved, I don't have any issue with that. I just don't think that's going to be particularly onerous, but if it does turn out that way, then we can come back and amend it.
I guess, I mean, I've also come up with a thousand hypotheticals, but say you've got a white food truck that someone's just started, has not been painted, the guy's trying out multiple, multiple models of food before he wraps, puts a wrap on his food truck, and he's got a banner hanging on there, for now he's "Go BBQ." Next week, he's going to be "Kimchi Taco." You know, it's like, feasibility that they, the idea that they may have a non-permanent sign associated with their food truck is not that...
So would it suffice if we just put, as Mr. Pons suggested, unless otherwise approved?
I think that's fine.
And we want to put that in front of signage? That last sentence? This is on C11. Unless otherwise approved, signage that is permanently affixed to the food truck shall be permitted, however, after "however," "however, unless otherwise approved, flags, banners, or other decorative appurtenances, whether attached or detached, shall not be allowed."
That's good.
Does that work?
I'm good with that.
Is that okay with you, Chris?
And none of this puts us in jeopardy with the sign issues? Okay.
I think the reality is, if someone's going to buy a food truck and they're ordering the wrap, we're talking about a matter of days or weeks, we're not talking about a matter of months or years.
Other thoughts?
That's about it.
See, this is why we waited for you to come back and comment. Ms. Ramsey?
Your fault. Your mistake.
Mr. Pons suggested it, we all went along. Mr. Pons?
I'm satisfied.
I just wanted to say that I appreciated the vice mayor's comments on that, and that I'm comfortable seeing an evaluation of how this policy works out, because I think it is important that we have that creativity and that flexibility for this whole redevelopment package. Also wanted to appreciate, you know, appreciate the mayor for waiting, waiting to hear back from the Restaurant Association and other important partners to get their input on this ordinance as well, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So do you guys want to approve this with Ms. Shelton's addition to C3 and the change to number 311?
Can I help you craft a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, that's nice. Please do.
So the motion would be to approve Proposed Ordinance Number 16-15A with the following amendments in paragraph C3, to add a sentence at the beginning of the section which reads, "The zoning administrator may approve food trucks remaining on-site for multi-day events or late closings on a case-by-case basis," and to amend paragraph 11 to read, prior to the last sentence, "However, the zoning administrator may approve signage, however, the zoning administrator may approve flags, banners, or other decorative appurtenances, whether attached or detached, on a case-by-case basis."
So moved.
We have a motion in a second? Ms. Walton?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Filing?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
This takes us to new business, and we have appointments to boards and commissions?
We do, I think. I move that effective immediately, city council appoint John Whitley to the Peninsula Agency on Aging for a Three-Year Term to expire September 30th, 2019.
Seconded.
Ms. Walton?
Zhang?
Aye.
Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Filing?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
This brings us to open forum. We welcome any citizen to come forward and speak about an issue of interest. We have no speakers cards, so if anybody would like to speak, please come forward, give us your name and address. Seeing no rush to the podium, that concludes the open forum. Do you have any items for closed session? Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor, I would just remind you, kind of open forum, about the Blue Talon Turkey Trot and the 10th anniversary coming up as well. I know there's not a calendar item like on work session, but I think it's worth mentioning. It's the 10th time it's in the city, so if people are a little stuffed at Thanksgiving, that it's a good opportunity to get out and loosen up a little bit before football starts and exercise.
This is even pre-stuffing.
Pre-stuffing.
Early in the morning on Thanksgiving Day.
Guilt-free Thanksgiving.
And our mayor will be making a celebrity appearance there.
I will.
And I'll be there, but walking, not running.
And the parking garage will be available, free parking?
The city will have the arm up, and there will be no cost to park, and the parking garage accessible off of Henry Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Foster?
All righty. I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2, 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph 1, concerning and important.
Second.
Ms. Walton?
Zhang?
Affirmed.
Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Filing?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess before we go into closed session. Mr. Whitley?
John Whitley got here just a...